To order, this is the Tuesday, March nineteenth, meeting of the City Planning Commission. And I guess we, and you should know that you have both a chairperson and the staff member in not our normal roles. So, we consider ourselves the A-Team, but we're gonna do our best to go through the meeting. We'll start with a call to order. And the roll call. That was the call to order, never mind, okay. What a way to start, huh?
Commissioner Ackerman.
Here.
Commissioner Gibrandle.
Here.
Commissioner Mills.
Here.
Commissioner Sauvay.
Here.
Commissioner Trudeau.
Here.
Commissioner Wetherby.
Here.
Commissioner Woods.
Here.
We have seven, that is a quorum.
Great. Is there anyone who can move the agenda? Moved by Commissioner Trudeau, seconded by Commissioner Gibrandle. All in favor of, any corrections or changes? All in favor of the agenda as posted, please say yes.
Yes.
Yes, that's everybody. Minutes of the previous meeting, I don't think we had any, so we'll, or introductions? I don't think we have any of those either. Okay, so now we're up to item number six, reports from city administration, city council, planning manager, planning commission officers and committees, and written communications and petitions. We'll start with Commissioner Ackerman.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm a bit tired, city council got out last, this morning at 2:00 AM. And it was a, it was a busy night, so I wanna walk you through a few updates, handful of which are directly related to this body. A smaller handful tangentially related, and then just wanted to update folks on one other item. The items directly related to the planning commission, the Malletts Wood PUD down on Ann Arbor's southeast side of town, passed at second reading. You'll remember, this is the second time we've run through this process on this property, as there was a clerical error in its original passage. The next item, the Lockwood PUD on the west side of town on Jackson, failed at first reading. This was a postponement from the original first reading in order to hold a public hearing on the item. This was a property of senior housing. Forty percent of the units would have been affordable to seniors. A property at twenty-six, twenty-five Valley Drive was annexed into the city. Two rezonings that came through this body, larger districts, multi-parcial districts, one on South Ashley, you'll remember, a C-2B district, and then West Hoover, an R-4C district. Both passed at first reading, although there was more discussion on South Ashley, and we'll, we'll figure out the direction there, if you'll remember. The recommendation from staff in this body was denial because of the contamination on the site, and the, the idea that a C-2B may greater incentivize a private developer to clean up the site through a brownfield process. And I'll remind folks, that's within the Historic District Commission as well. The other property, West Hoover, very little conversation, however, well, I'll leave it that, but passed at first reading. The next item directly related to this was, city council passed direction to the planning commission to review and revise the downtown affordable housing premium, trying to increase the utility of that premium and the public benefit of that premium. City council also directed staff to pursue regulation of short-term rentals, things like Airbnb, and because part of those recommendations could very well be zoning-related, I wanted to bring that to your attention. Tangentially related to this body, the city is entering in to add a property to the Green Belt in Superior Township. And it ranked actually the highest percentile of scoring, so really desired property. Easements for access to build pedestrian and flood management tunnel between Depot Streets and Argo Pond were all, were approved, this is the, not the final step, but the second to final step in all of the legal work we need to do before construction can begin, which is really exciting. Then, three city-owned properties are to be evaluated for the development of affordable housing, seven-twenty-one North Main, two thousand South Industrial, and fifteen-ten East Stadium. These were three separate resolutions that passed city council last night. Then finally, just to bring it to your attention, as a, a few of you, or perhaps only one of you, also serves on the Transportation Commission, draft revisions to the crosswalk ordinance will be heading to the Transportation Commission and the Disabilities Commission for their review and guidance before coming back to city council, likely sometime in April or May, if I were to guess, but obviously dependent on the, those two commissions' schedules and agendas. Long night, long update, if you have any questions, happy to answer.
Thank you very much, that kind of update, like, must've been there late, all the other things too, that are not planning-related. Okay, next is planning manager, Mr. DeLeo, do you have anything?
I do not at this time.
Okay, thank you. Any planning commission officers or committees? I'll just note that next week's ORC meeting, the Ordnance Revisions Committee meeting, is going to be rescheduled, because more than half of us can't make it. I don't think we have a date or time yet, but for people who do follow the ORC, it's not going to be next Tuesday evening, we'll figure out when that is and post that. Written communications and petitions, there are a couple in hard copy, I think, before us or in the packet. Okay. Let's see. The, this, item number seven is audience participation. This is the first of a couple opportunities for members of the audience to address the planning commission on any item that isn't listed on the agenda for tonight. And if you do speak now, or at any of the opportunities for public comment tonight, if you'll fill out one of the comment forms and drop it in the box either before or after you speak, that way we can keep record of that. So, does anyone want to address us now?
David Depice, yes, a general comment about some of the land use ordinance you guys are gonna be considering later tonight. Generally, I really like the staff reports that are submitted, but in my opinion, we, the staff report should include a section about how these ordinance are affecting our sustainability framework. Where, what are we trying to do, and how does it meet our sustainability goals? Some certain expectations should be, you know, noted, so we can measure whether this ordinance is successful or not. How do we know our ordinance is successful unless we have a certain goal presented? So that's my main point there, so thank you.
Thank you very much. Would anyone else like to address the commission? All right, moving on to item number eight, public hearings scheduled for the next business meeting. I see one in our packet, which is five-ninety-five Riverview Drive, annexation and zoning for the city council approval, it's a request to annex a .6 acre parcel in Ann Arbor, from Ann Arbor Township. Anything else that you had to add, is that all that you know of as well?
That is all that I know of.
Very good. Moving right along, unfinished business, we have none, and so we are on to item ten, regular business. We have three items tonight, and for each of these, we'll start with a staff report, which Ms. DeLeo will give, and then we'll have the public hearing, and then the commission discussion. So the first one is twenty-seven-oh-five Newport, annexation and zoning for city council approval.
Thank you, Ms. Chair, tonight's chair. This is a straight, this is a straightforward petition, it is to annex, it is to annex and zone a single piece at twenty-seven-oh-five Newport Road. It is the Herb Downward Picasso Annexation and Zoning. It's a one-point-one acre, one-point-two acre parcel from Ann Arbor Township, annexed into the city to be, or petition to be zoned R-1A, single-family zoning district. This is at the request of the property owner, and they're requesting it to be able to connect to city utilities, their well has failed, staff is recommending approval.
All right, now we'll open the public hearing, if anyone would like to address the commission, can do so. Okay, we'll close the public hearing, and I read the motion, and then, yes, okay. The motion is, this, the Ann Arbor City Planning Commission hereby recommends that the mayor and city council approve the Herb Downward Picasso Annexation and R-1A, single-family dwelling district zoning at twenty-seven-oh-five Newport Road. Was the commissioner, moved that, moved by Commissioner Ackerman, seconded by Commissioner Sauvay. We are open for discussion. All right, I think we're ready for a vote then, all in favor of the motion as read, please say yes.
Yes.
Yes. That's everybody. Okay, next item is, let me make sure I have these in the right order. Yes, it is a petition to amend chapter twenty, or chapter fifty-five, the Unified Development Code for city council approval to allow restaurant, bar, and food service use in the office-o zoning district, under certain conditions.
Thank you. As you mentioned, this is an amendment to chapter fifty-five, section five-fifteen and five-sixteen, to allow restaurant, bar, and food service in the office district. The amendment, the amendments are proposed to allow these under certain conditions, such as when there is already a large office building. Little bit of background, the office district currently allows traditional office uses, including financial services, banks, general offices, medical, dental. There also is a little laundry list of a variety of other uses that are permitted, such as all forms of residential, some public institutional uses, childcare centers, education schools, hotels. A few things are allowed by special exception use. Under the heading of incidental services, which are accessory to a principal use, you can have things like a cafeteria, so there is a, there's a small element currently of restaurantee type use, but that would be within the main building and not generally intended for the public, it would just be for, as incidental to that employment use. The proposed amendments would allow and regulate restaurant, bars, and food services in the office district. The first amendment, the first thing to amend would be section five-point-five, table five-dash-fifteen. With a small amendment, we'd be adding a P to the O column for the restaurant, bar, and food service row. If you can see the screen, I am pointing to it right here, and it is circled in the staff report. Second amendment would be then to add some use-specific standards to section five-sixteen-three-L. On the screen here, the first standard for one in the C-one district is not repeated on the screen, but is in the staff report. But for the O district, we would add this new language shown by underline, and in summary, the criteria would be, restaurants would be allowed if it's a four-acre parcel or more, if there is a ten-thousand square foot, I'm sorry, one-hundred-thousand square foot building or larger. The driveway for the restaurant must be shared with the office use, and it, we're clarifying that it can be internal to the building, or it can be a freestanding restaurant. We have done some analysis, we found that there's about three-hundred-and-seventy-three acres of land zoned office, about two-hundred-and-eighty parcels, the average parcel size is just more than an acre. There are about twenty percent of them are more than two acres, just one percent are more than ten acres. Under the proposed use-specific standards, there'd be three addresses that would be eligible for restaurants, seven-seven-seven East Eisenhower, seven-eighty-nine East Eisenhower, and twenty-seven-twenty-three South State Street. They are here, twenty-seven-seventy-three South State, seven-seven-seven Eisenhower, and seven-eighty-nine Eisenhower. In the fun fact category, Wolverine Tower would also qualify, but it is owned by the University of Michigan. And some of these acres and parcels are land that is zoned office, and you'll find it in the office district, but it is owned by the university. We've been a little bit slower in rezoning land to PL upon, when, upon acquisition by U of M. But this, the use-specific standards were set to try to capture office developments having about more than five-hundred people, these are considered large. And we felt that that is the size that could help support a full-service restaurant without generating more vehicle trips. And although modest, these amendments would broaden the permitted uses of the O district to further activate what is now a limited-use district. This would benefit both the, the employees and the occupants, the daytime occupants of that district, but as well as the, as the city, this would be furthering our goals towards providing a more active, vibrant, mixed-use community. And staff is recommending approval. Wrong way, and I'm here to answer any questions.
Thank you very much, we will now open this up for a public hearing. If you'd like to address the commission, feel free to step forward.
Yes, David Depice again. A couple things were nagging at me about this proposal, a lot has to do with some of the definitions of what's going on. One that wasn't a definition was, kind of bothered me that we're sort of creating a zoning that is only benefiting currently two large landowners, and that to me seems a little bit like spot zoning through the back door. So, I'm not sure what you guys think of that, I'd love to hear your conversation when this, you start discussing it, but that did bother me a little bit. The second is the idea of, I think the zoning calls for a shared parking lot, and shared is not defined in the ordinance. My thinking is, okay, could you have a separate standalone restaurant with its own parking lot, and an office with its own parking lot, and just the owner of the property say, well, you can park anywhere? Does that mean that both those lots are shared parking lots? Are we talking about, you expect a continuous contiguous parking lot to be shared by both entities? And the third thing was, there's no definition on how many restaurants would be allowed on this. And I don't know how the area height and placement rules would fit into this, but I can see if you had a large frontage, and the office building was farther in the back, maybe you could put two or three restaurants up near the front, and is that something we really want? And I guess my final question would be, you know, aggregation of office properties. You know, you have a couple one-and-a-half office zone properties, and somebody buys out three of them, puts up enough office space, are they then gonna be able to, you know, put a couple restaurants up in the front or wherever they want? So I hope I'll hear some of that discussion answers to some of this when you talk about it, and see what your thoughts are, so thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to address the commission on this item? Okay, then I'll close the public hearing and read the motion. The Ann Arbor City Planning Commission hereby recommends that the mayor and city council approve the amendments to chapter fifty-five Unified Development Code, sections five-colon-fifteen and five-colon-sixteen, to allow restaurant, bar, and food service use in the O office district, and provide use-specific standards. Can I have a commissioner move this, please, Commissioner Sauvay, seconded by Commissioner Wetherby? We are open for discussion. Commissioner Ackerman.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you to staff for preparing this. My questions and concerns are pretty mirrored from the public hearing. I appreciate the idea of being able to include restaurants, bars, and food service in the office district, I think it serves a few core functions that, you know, one, it's reducing vehicle trips midday as people who work in the offices have the opportunity to eat local, or in the immediate area. And, and two, it just creates more walkable opportunity in what would otherwise be, you know, fairly barren office space. So, so I appreciate that. And, and then third, I think, these large slate office buildings are going through some pretty interesting market dynamics that as open office spaces become more popular, as people work from home more and more, just the amount of office space that companies and organizations need is just reduced. And so I think a lot of these office buildings are having a hard time filling up and finding tenants, and the ability to stay flexible, to provide, you know, valuable land is, is of interest to me. I did agree that the, the idea of creating a zoning ordinance citywide that really does only affect a small number of landlords and properties did feel a little off to me, and there may be opportunity to see some of that benefit in other areas. There are a lot of office complexes throughout town that could see just as much benefit. However, any single building doesn't reach that hundred-thousand-square-foot requirement, nor is any parcel, individual parcel, four acres. And so I, I put a question out to the commission to see what people's interest is. You know, in talking to staff, one idea would be allowing for restaurant, bar, food services to be a percentage of square foot of, of an office building. And the reason that that alternative resonated with me was, one, we have precedent, so if you think about our light industrial zoning district, you know, ten percent can be used as retail, so there's some precedent of structuring our zoning ordinance in that way. But also, you know, as you increase the size of the office, you presumably also increase the number of employees, which means that you can likely fill a larger restaurant without having to increase your parking requirement, or increase the traffic trips in and out of the property. Similarly, as you reduce the size of the office, you, well, one, you reduce the likelihood that those earlier factors will be accomplished, but also, just as building code comes into play eventually, you probably size yourself out of a usable restaurant space, and our smaller office spaces may become irrelevant, which may be appropriate. So I just wanted to pose that as an idea, something I discussed with Ms. DeLeo and Mr. Leonard this afternoon, and just see how, how something like that resonates. I don't know what percent to plug in there, I think that's something that we need to talk about, and I think, as, if we do talk about it, I think the, the factors to look at are impact to parking, impact to traffic trips, and traffic generation, the ratio of employees to seats in the restaurant, and then eventually kind of what thresholds, maximums, or minimums we wanna look at in terms of square footage of restaurant space. So, that's, that's my deal, that's my two cents, and would love to hear colleagues' thoughts.
Commissioner Gibrandle.
I think that's a really intriguing idea, actually, and that addresses some of my concerns too. One thing I would like to clarify, that I could've looked up before him, but I didn't, so perhaps our planning chair can, can fill this in for us, is what is the difference between office and, you know, like what would be restaurant parking, like is it two-to-one, is it, you know, like what, what are we looking at here in terms of the, the real difference of parking requirements for people in their cubicles in the same square footage, is how many tables would fit into that same square footage?
Thankfully, Ms. DeLeo knows the UDC.
I'll start, start with the office. The general office space requires a minimum of one per three-hundred-and-thirty-three square feet.
Okay.
And a maximum of one per two-hundred-and-fifty square feet. So, basically a minimum of three per thousand, and a maximum of four per thousand. Medical, dental, a little bit more parking requirement, a minimum of one space per two-twenty, and a maximum of one space per one-eighty square feet. And restaurants, if they are standalone, there, back in the commercial page. A standalone restaurant requires one space for every one-hundred square feet.
Oh, wow.
Ten per thousand, so twice or three times as much as office. But if a restaurant is in a shopping center, the shopping center requires a minimum of one per two-eighty-five, a maximum of one per two-fifty square feet, so much more in line with office.
Got it. So, almost comparable, actually.
Yes, the, the maximum is the same.
Yeah.
The minimum is lower in the shopping center, commercial shopping center.
Okay, 'cause that makes a big difference for me, I guess in some ways, we could ask the question, like, why do we care whether it's restaurant or office, if the parking, like if it allows kind of flexibility in some ways of certain things to happen, in terms of an evolving workplace, and in terms of, I mean, you just may have demand, there may be some places kind of more isolated, and it's like, they just need some place to eat, and other places that, you know, that don't have as much. And I could, I mean, this building has like a tiny little cafe, you know, I doubt people come here just to get the coffee and then leave. But, you know, I mean, there, there, it just seems like it allows, and, and in regards to the point of like, how many places can open up, I don't know, does it matter? of like how many places can open up, I don't know, does it matter? Like, could it be a bunch of little inside food truck ideas? You know what I mean, really? Like, in some ways. So I guess I'm kind of inclined to be flexible with this in a way to be able to allow for a changing workplace and, because my first question was, why four acres? Like, it just seemed huge to me and it seemed too few to really make much of a difference. And, I don't know, so right now, before, I've heard many of my colleagues' ideas and issues around this, I'm inclined to have this feel flexible. And in terms of fitting into the sustainability framework, which I think is an excellent question, and I'm glad you raised it, I think the, you know, the opportunity for people to be able to go downstairs to get their lunch instead of drive somewhere else, I think is great. So I think that's, that's a big, you know, that's a big thing, actually, in terms of car trips. So I would love to explore the percentage thing more. I think that's a really interesting idea. And this totally feels like shopping center to me, not like standalone restaurant in terms of the comparable, you know, parking ratios. So that's where I am right now with this.
Commissioner Woods.
Ms. DeLeo, I was wondering, can you tell us where is the demand for this change coming from? Is this something that originated with the business community or could you just give us a little history of that?
Yes. We did receive a petition submitted by Oxford Properties, which does own some land in the South State Street Eisenhower area, other, elsewhere as well. They do own 777 Eisenhower and 789 Eisenhower. And they had submitted a petition to, for a text amendment. They had actually said, requested that offices with more than 200,000 square feet of floor area be allowed to have restaurants. I think they were looking for an amenity to their office tenants. They had said that they are running at about, or a little bit lower than, but they're running at about one employee per 200 square feet. So their 200,000 square foot building has about 1,000 employees in it. And as staff, when analyzing the petition, that's where we came up with, you know, that is an extremely high threshold. Maybe let's broaden it a little bit. 500 employees is still a lot of employees in one spot, to be concentrated in one spot. That's almost like a little neighborhood of, in and of itself. And a pretty dense neighborhood at that during the day. But it did come from, a petition was submitted to consider a text amendment.
Thank you. So a couple of questions then come out for me. One is, I agree with someone who said that many people are choosing to work from home and those kinds of things. So I'm wondering, will that change the numbers of employees who are going to be in these big buildings? And one, on one hand, that frees up some of their space to have a restaurant. On the other hand, it means that they have fewer people who are actually going to be using those services. So that, I think, would be interesting. The other thing is, do new restaurants in a, in a big building like this, does that begin to undermine the mom and pop kinds of carts and other things that are out there that many employees find that they want to go and visit and walk around on their lunch breaks and things like that? So, but I don't know whether or not any kinds of surveys or anything like that has, has been done to get a, to get a feel for that. I agree with my colleague that when I saw that it was, what was it, four acres? I thought, where's that number? What's generating that number? You know, why not 3.5? Why not three? Or, you know, I just really wanted to know what's the rationale behind making a change like this. So I'll continue to listen to my colleagues to see where I come on this.
Commissioner Trudeau.
Thank you. So, didn't turn on. So, thank you. When I first read the headline on this, my first concern was, oh, if we're just going to allow these, then are we just going to turn everything into restaurants? And then I, sort of like how we allow residential in our mixed-use districts and we get drive-throughs. And then I read it and I saw that you thought about that and put these constraints on it. And then I went the other way and I think I share the opinion of what we've heard at the table, that it seems like a really large, high threshold and, which does make it feel off because then it really does only apply to three properties. So I'm also very interested in seeing if we can find a different balance. And I do like the proposal of setting it as a percentage. So I'm also in support of kind of taking another stab at this because I don't see the harm in having a variety of uses. I think the benefit's pretty clear, as long as we're not just incentivizing conversion of all of this, this office space into solely restaurant space. But I don't, yeah, so I think there's a balance we can find. One question I had, just going back to parking, how would the parking requirements be determined if they were adding, say if they're adding a freestanding building and adding a little bit more floor area? Like, is that going to be driven by the use? So would it be driven by the current standard for restaurant use? Or would it be driven by some use under the office classification?
I do believe that that area could be clarified a little more. I think that the initial, the intention was, without the, the vehicle and the off-street parking must be shared with the existing or proposed office. I think we intended for there would be no parking requirement for the freestanding restaurant, that it would just need to use whatever parking is available for the office. But that could be much more explicit. Also, it could be clear that the freestanding restaurant would be applied. It could be clarified that the office standard could be applied. We could even come up with a third number. So that is probably something that's worthy for discussion.
Yeah, and I think trying to find a balance there makes sense because I don't, we don't want to necessarily create a lot of parking that isn't going to be needed, but, so making sure we understand, the standard's clear because that, yeah, great. Yeah, that's all I have.
Commissioner Weatherby.
I just want to agree with the rest of the commissioners. When I first saw this, I have, you know, why is it limited to these restrictive conditions? And I currently, I've worked in buildings where they have little restaurants and, you know, places that are really geared toward outside. I worked at the university library and they put in a café that is one of the highest generating cafés and there's no parking whatsoever there. And now I work in a building where there isn't anything and people do take their cars all the time. I mean, they take their cars to go get a cup of coffee. They take their car, and I think if we could limit that as much as possible, and I don't think it's because they really want their Starbucks. I think it's just that they want a cappuccino and there isn't one in the building. So, so I think this can, you know, it's a tenuous sustainability link, but I think that there is, there is a case for it. I actually think having a food service available in a building of 200 people or 400 people or 700 people is, is very helpful. So I do think that probably percentage is probably, I mean, that makes sense in hearing it, but I don't know, you know, I don't know what that number would be. But I think, you know, a small coffee shop for a few hundred people, a larger full-service restaurant, if there's 1,000 people, makes sense to me so that the percentages seem reasonable. But the only, you know, I did have the thought, could it compete with local businesses? But it could also be local businesses. So I think there's, there's not, you know, there's no, nothing that says it's going to be a McDonald's and even those are franchises. So it's hard to, hard to say that it's going to compete necessarily. I did have a question, though. Were there any potential downsides? Was it just parking? Was that the, the main concern?
It's a, that's a very subjective downside. I mean, on the one hand, I don't think there are many obvious downsides, but it, and it's perhaps a matter of perspective. It would be moving the office district towards a more mixed-use district. It wouldn't be just an, just an office use, which may be good or bad. Along those lines, the office is often used as a buffer area between residential and more intense commercial. And if you're adding a little bit more intense commercial uses into the office, that does minimize the benefits of having an office as a buffer. But we also have things like conflicting land use buffers and so forth. So there's a lot of overlap. I think a lot of this is just, is depending on your perspective and your goals about what are the pros and cons.
Okay. Thank you.
Commissioner Ackerman.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And I want to hear from any colleagues who haven't had a chance, but it sounds like we want to explore this perhaps a little more, that we have some sense of possible solutions, not necessarily the hard numbers associated with those solutions. And I think if we were to refer this to a work session or postpone this to another public hearing, maybe an interesting data point would be where office districts do come into contact with residential districts, just so we could get a better sense of what that looks like on a map. And then what the conflicting land use buffers are between office and residential, just to make sure that if we were to change potential uses, that those are accounted for appropriately. So I don't want to cut off any other colleagues, but I think at some point soon I'll make a motion to either refer or postpone, depending on staff's recommendation.
Commissioner Sauvay.
So I'll just fill in the last tooth here. Yeah, one of my big concerns was about kind of freestanding and what parking trigger that would be because typically when we look at parking requirements, it's per the building highest intensity use. And if it's a freestanding restaurant, it goes to one to 100. But I would imagine, like, thinking about those operating hours during the day, it's mostly serviced by the office use. And at night, when the people using the office aren't using that parking lot anyway, dinner service, you've got more than enough parking to balance those out. I think in the remarks of driving out to get your coffee and lunch, the same with deliveries. So it's two-way traffic all day long, people getting delivered stuff to their office. And seeing, designing more and more office space, the amount of amenities getting developed into office space, taking some of those kind of construction elements out and having general construction of those sorts of amenities in a larger building, kind of reduces construction impact to have larger kitchenettes and things within each office space. So if there's several tenants, I actually see a trigger that those tenants would do less build-out for, you know, those sorts of amenities individually if they had shared amenities. So it's a pivot to just the office building standard, which creates more shared built environment, which I think is a kind of a big sustainability trigger, that you're not operating multiple kitchens, refrigeration units and things like that. They're huge energy loads. So I think, like, I support a communal office building amenity to carry that load. I do agree that finding a smaller scale that supports more parcels is big. I think, as you all know, I'm big into the adaptive reuse and how we can modify certain zoning to fit more businesses in. And I think that's a big trigger for small businesses and restaurateurs to find pockets like this, so it's not large properties looking for maybe larger outfits to lease out to. There are, I'm looking at a map of along Jackson Road, at Jackson and Stadium, and there's C3 that has a particular restaurant with some parking triggers and then office as a buffer between that and residential. So I can see where if that office space kind of grabs that C3 scope creep, we can have a lot more street parking issues in the residential areas. So there might be kind of a two-tier system. 10% from my experience in the building code is a pretty typical accessory use to look at, but I would be interested in a working session or something to evaluate kind of the lower tier because in a, say, 10,000 square foot small office, 1,000 square foot restaurant is still pretty substantial. That's a true restaurant. So that impact in a buffer area could be on the higher side of proportion. So that 10% might be actually a sliding scale down. So I would be open to like a working session, so really iron out some of those numbers to make sure that office doesn't become some other type of zoning that is more disruptive than what it's strategically meant to do as a buffer.
My two cents. Thank you. And I think everything that I had written down has now been said, which is the great thing about playing chair for the day. And I'll just reiterate the things that I think that we should bring to the working session. I think Commissioner Sauvay really picked up on the point that I was going to make about, right now, we're thinking about parking during the day and the benefits this provides during the day. But actually, this could really be beneficial. We could cut down on the amount of parking lot that we need for restaurants if, you know, if it's that dinner crowd is after the office clears out. So I think that this is really an opportunity for sustainability. And particularly, even if we're just looking at this part of town, one of the things that we have been working on in, in the Ordinance Revisions Committee is thinking about transit-oriented development in this, in this part of town and how mixing more uses may make that, that area more sustainable and, you know, an ability for people not to have to drive. My husband works just kitty corner from here and like, there's no, there's no place to go for lunch, you know? The other thing that I think we'll want to talk about in, when we bring this back is where exactly what Commissioner Ackerman brought up, where are we buffering? Where, does office serve as buffers? And maybe there, maybe it just so happens that parcel size kind of controls for some of that. So I don't know what our mapping ability is to like do it on the fly, but I'm wondering if, you know, if the one acre threshold is kind of, helps us get at that or something like that. And I, I think this idea of a sliding scale is really helpful. And also, I have no sense of how big the floor area is of like a restaurant. And so, you know, in a, in a thousand or 100,000 square foot office, like, if it's 10%, like, is 10,000 square feet a big restaurant? Like, I think so. So like, maybe we don't even want that. Maybe it's more 5%. I mean, I think that kind of under, I think we'll want to bring that understanding to when we talk about this. So I will entertain a motion to, yes, Commissioner Ackerman.
I will refer this topic to, I will move to refer this topic to a work session, date to be determined and publicly noticed.
Is that seconded by Commissioner Trudeau? Any discussion about that? Then, all in favor of referring this to a future work session, please say yes?
Yes.
Yes. Now we're done. Yes, okay. We don't do those kind of motions very often. Thank you. All right. Item number three, let me move my papers.
I don't know what I got. It's, looks like this.
Oh, okay. It doesn't have the same
No.
Proposed motion. Okay. Well, that'll be fun when I get to read what the proposed motion is. So right now, I'll just say that this item is proposed in
Go.
One more? Okay.
No. Proposed motion.
Got it, okay. I don't do that until after the public hearing, I think, though.
Yeah, right. I totally know that.
But I needed to know that. Okay. Our next item is, see clearly, kind of, yeah. Eighteen, but second stringers. Okay. This is the proposed amendments to Table 515, permitted use table and Section 5.16.6D, accessory dwelling units within the UDC.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Okay. I am going to explain some proposed amendments to the UDC regarding accessory dwelling units. These amendments will expand where the ADUs are allowed. They will amend the requirements regarding the, they have to be attached or detached. They will remove the requirement that any new entrance be located on the side or rear of a structure. They'll remove the 5,000 square foot minimum lot size requirement. And they have a reordering of the requirements into more logical groupings. I have, I was not the author of this, these amendments, but in reviewing them, I was a little confused. And so I did my best to be able to both explain them and have you understand them as, as well. One is fairly straightforward. We have amendment to Table 515. I've circled and read I've circled and read what, where the, um, accessory dwelling units will now be allowed. The As indicate accessory, and they will now be allowed in the R2B, R3, R4A, R4C, R4, did I say A, B, C, R4D, and R4E. They will not be allowed in the R6, which is a mobile home, because it's of the ownership structure. You can't exactly own your mobile home outright because they're usually on the land lease. Then, um, the, in the packet, you'll see that the, um, there is a strike through version in the packet, um, and it looks like there's a lot of strike throughs and a lot of, of going, goings on. So I will describe it as this. For the first existing requirement in section 516.6D, number one, that is not changing, currently says an ADU is permitted on a parcel that has one single family dwelling as the permitted principal use. Requirement two, that is not changing, the owner, the owner shall occupy either the ADU or the single family dwelling on the property, except for temporary absences. Provision three is being deleted. Provision four is turning into provision seven. The requirement for the 5,000 square foot minimum is being deleted, and it will read for lots up to 7,200 square feet, maximum size is 600, um, feet of floor area for the ADU. For lots greater than 7,200, the maximum ADU size is 800 square feet. Regulation five is changing to regulation four without any further change. Regulation six is being deleted. Seven is changing to five, and it's being a little clarified, the total number of persons in the combined on the property shall not exceed the occupancy established by the zoning ordinance. Eight is changing to nine without any further amendments. Nine is changing to 10 without further amendments. 10 is changing to six. 11 is changing to three, and 11 is changing to three. So in short, in the end, with these permitted, um, or with these amendments, section 516.6D will read, um, that one, it's permitted on any parcel with a single family dwelling in any R district, and the asterisk is for the R6. Two, it's one dwelling must be occupied by the owner. Two, you have to, three, you have to record a deed restriction with some specific content. Four, two unrelated people plus their offspring in the ADU. And five, four unrelated people plus offspring overall. Six is a minimum 30-day lease. Seven is the size of the ADU relative to the lot size. Eight, it is permitted in conforming accessory buildings, um, and this would be, also means you can build a new accessory building. Currently, you cannot. And nine, one parking space for, per ADU or none if, if you're near a bus stop. So I am happy to answer any questions. I hope this clarified what is changing and what is simply just moving around, um, in the proposed amendment.
Is there clarification before we open it up?
Yeah. Um, on, on your in-short list, uh, number five, the four unrelated people plus offspring, wasn't that changed to be the number of people in the zoning?
Yes. It's probably, it's four or six, depending on the zoning.
Right.
Yeah, that's a, a PowerPoint error, not an ordinance error.
Okay. Great. Okay. Uh, we can ask more questions of Mr. Leo after the public hearing, which I'll open now. So if anyone would like to address the commission, please step to the podium, and you know the drill.
David Depys. Well, it's a huge positive that this is coming forward again. I really thank the hard work by staff and the commissioners and residents to, uh, help realize that ADUs haven't met their expectations and to get some changes forward that are going to make it a reality. A couple suggestions I have for possible amendments. One has to do with the 30-day lease. You don't have any, many communities have a section where no subleasing is allowed. I think that you might want to consider that, because you can have a situation where maybe I rent something for nine months, and then I'm gone for three months, and I, you know, lease it to whoever wants it for two weeks or whatever, four weeks. Now, maybe you're thinking that the original lease agreement might preclude that, but there might be some owners that say, hey, I kind of like the Airbnb model, uh, maybe I'll just, if I don't want to deal with the hassle, I'll just rent my ADU out to an agent, and then they can sublease it to, you know, whoever, and I can rake in those extra profits. So I would like to see maybe no subleasing allowed on the, on the properties. The second thing I'd like to see is one exception to the owner occupied rule, uh, where you could allow, um, one person to rent the entire property. I mean, the whole idea of, um, ADUs came from the granny idea where, you know, you'd build something to, to help your parent. You wanted them close, but not too close. Or maybe a, a child, a recent graduate that is starting out in life, maybe you'd like to have them still live with you, but maybe not right in the same building. So I'd like to see the same opportunity offered to renters for that as would be to owners of these buildings. So I'd like to see an exception to that owner occupied if the entire ADU and the main property is rented out to one individual. So thank you for your time and hope you approve this, these changes.
Is there anyone else?
Hi, my name is Jessica Leto. I'm a renter in the Fifth Ward, um, and I have to say that ADUs have been kind of my introduction to how ordinances work, uh, in the city and how change works in the city. I held a workshop last fall, the ABCs of ADUs, and had a builder from Portland here, who is an experienced ADU design builder, um, and I learned from her and in looking at other communities that what we're going through is what a lot of other communities have gone through, which is evolution. A lot of cities implement an ADU ordinance, they see how it goes for a couple of years, they amend the ordinance, they see how it goes for a few years, they amend the ordinance. And so it's been kind of liberating to see that something like this can actually be a living reflection of how it's working or not working in a community. I also, this is a little bit of a process point, but, um, I attended the working session on ADUs, and I actually really appreciated that the Word document with all of the edits were in here. It was just interesting and helpful to see how people were thinking through the changes, including, I, I know it's confusing to read out, but how the, um, how the different amendments are being kind of resolved logically. And I'm also pleased to see a couple of the changes making it easier to implement ADUs in not just historic districts, but districts closer in, um, to the center of the city. The idea is that these are hopefully more affordable housing, and to have them be walkable and accessible to more things is really great. So I, I appreciate the change, but I think what I'm trying to say is I appreciate the process, and I look forward to the conversation. Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Hi, Jessica. I'm Jeff Crockett, and I live at 500 S. Kingsley, and I'm not representing any organization tonight. I'm just here speaking as an individual. And I think most of us here tonight are here for affordable housing. And I, uh, am in favor of ADUs. And I would like to compliment the planning staff for improving the ordinance in terms of setting up time requirements and restrictions on the number of related guests. I think many of us are really concerned about the fact that if ADUs become B&Bs, that's going to really reduce the housing stock, and so there needs to be restrictions there. But I do have three concerns about the current proposal. First, there is no requirement that the design of the ADU should be compatible with the design of the primary structure, and I think this is a problem. Now, I know in the historic district, there is a screening process where the ADU needs to be com, uh, compatible with the design of the main structure. And I think that's a good principle, should be adopted everywhere. Otherwise, you're going to end up with a lot of ADUs that may not be compatible at all and look terrible. And I think look, design is a factor in the beauty and the sense of community for a neighborhood. So basically, the second problem I have was, and I haven't heard any discussion about this, is enforcement. And we're very sensitive to this in our neighborhood because of the, our experience with the sign ordinance. And anytime you have temporary signs, the problem is how are you going to monitor the timing of this? So in regards to this ordinance, you set time limits of six months, for example, in terms of people have to be there. The trouble is how do you track that? What happens if you, a neighbor reports and says, well, I think this person has been gone for, you know, six months, so you confront the property owner, there's no data to support, support it one way or the other. So I think that thi, this needs to be considered at any rate to come up with some kind of plan so that where there are violations, uh, basically, uh, there is a response to that. The other part to enforcement is having the staff, inspection staff, enough inspection staff to actually do the enforcement. And the building staff now are sort of understaffed, and so I'm one of those fans of saying we need not just more building staff, we need more planning staff to respond to the community. So I think somehow that needs to be addressed, if not here, then by council. My third concern is the affordability of constructing ADUs to begin with. I connected on a social media site with someone from Grand Rapids who said after a number of years, they just had two people, you know, participate. And I said, well, what's the cost of building an ADU? I thought maybe fifty grand. Is that three minutes up?
It is, buddy.
There's not a line behind you, so go ahead and finish.
Okay. Well, it seems to me that affordability, uh, if we're really to take this seriously, there needs to be some support from people who are considering building ADUs. And Jessica may be that person, but it would seem to me that if you had examples of well-designed ADUs that work from other areas, and you present that, then you'd have a greater likelihood of people doing it. And the other thing is help for the financial aspect of it. I mean, from what I can gather, it's only people who, middle-class people who have a, have a mortgage are not going to be able to afford getting a second mortgage in order to get an ADU. It's only going to be those people who have already, in my opinion, bought their house and have no mortgage, who can afford to get additional funds to do that. So how, how can we address the affordability if we're going to be serious about making ADUs happen? Thank you very much.
Thank you. Is there anyone else? Here, one more. Or maybe not.
Hi, I'm Tom Stolberg. I live at 1202 Traver Street. I want to be the guy that says, pause for a moment, and let's think about the worst-case scenarios of this, because we're going to get them, whether we think about them ahead of time or not. We're creating a zoning change. We're creating a buy right for people to build something in their yard. And as one of the other speakers said, if you're not in a historic district, there's no design regulation on what they build. You know, if my hobby is ships, and I want to build an ADU that's 600 square foot and it looks like a boat, I can. I have a neighbor down the block from me who loves to salvage material, and he's built out buildings on his property with salvaged siding and things like that. So I'm not trying to scare everybody in that this is all we're going to get, but I think we need to think about the worst-case scenario, because somebody is going to end up with that worst-case scenario in their backyard, uh, in the setback of their neighbor's yard. And we've had some good comments, um, from everybody who's spoken, but that's four of us. I think we need more public engagement on this. This is going to impact just about every homeowner, potentially. And, you know, we, we published notice on this, but, you know, are we giving individual notice to homeowners that their neighbor might have a new structure in their yard? I don't know what the requirement for notice is, but I think we should think about the idea that most people are, this is under the radar for most people. And most people are going to like the idea of an ADU when they think of the traditional concept of an ADU. But as, my concern is the new structure portion of that. I mean, limited my concerns to just that, brand-new structures. And I think we need to work on this a little bit more, get more public engagement and public input, and think about, uh, like I said, the worst-case scenarios. There's always somebody who wants to game the system when you make a rule, uh, somebody who's looking to make a buck off this, and there may be something we haven't thought of. Well, somebody will think of it, because it's, it's like hackers. You can't keep, they're faster than us at coming up with the ways to get around the system. So I want to think about, you know, how can we have more public engagement? And also, as we move one step at a time in the ADU process, maybe we're not ready for the step of brand-new structures. Because the next step, if we took one more step after brand-new structures and added non-owner occupancy, by adding new structures now, we're one step away from going over the cliff of upzoning every single-family neighborhood to having detached duplexes. We need to be a little further away than one step away from that. Thank you.
Anyone else? All right, we'll close the public hearing, and I will find the motion to read. The Ann Arbor Planning Commission recommends approval of amendments to the Unified Development, I'm going to amend this, code, as presented to increase the opportunity for accessory dwelling units in the city of Ann Arbor. Is there a commissioner who removed that? Moved by Commissioner Wetherby, seconded by Commissioner Sovey? Discussion. Commissioner Ackerman.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thanks for the thoughtful comments, uh, from, from the public. I just have, oh, actually, a lot of questions, if that, that's all right. It's, uh, for context, the original ordinance was passed by City Council in August of 2016, and it's been a long two and a half years, so some refreshers would be helpful. And I just want to nail down, um, well, certainly a couple items. Just to be crystal clear, no matter the zoning district, ADUs could only be built on parcels being used as single-family dwellings, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
Well, that is what it says.
Uh, and they, the, the properties have to remain owner occupied? That is, an owner has to live on-site?
That is
In the primary or secondary structure?
That is currently required, and that requirement is not supposed, uh, slated to change.
Okay. And then, in a hypothetical, what happens to an ADU if a duplex or a multifamily building is developed on a R2, R3, R4, or R5 property? That, what would happen to the ADU? An ADU was left, could be left physically standing?
Well, that's where the deed restriction comes into play.
Okay.
So, uh, that, that's where the deed restriction comes into play. And so if you want to do this and you want the, the, the benefit of the ADU, um, as opposed to a duplex, um, then you'll need to encumber your property so that if it, and which runs with the land.
So that would be a separate but parallel process to all your permitting and construction of the ADU itself?
Right.
Got it, okay. Can you remind us of the setback requirements for detached ADUs to adjacent properties?
In residential district, uh, well, in a, in a residential district, accessory structures can be, um, as close as three feet from the side or the rear property line. They can only occupy 35% of the required rear yard, so bigger the lot, bigger the, the size of the structure, whether it be a garage or an ADU. We have been coached by the, the planners, have been coached by the building department to say, there's an asterisk there, and the zoning ordinance, I, we can issue you a permit for that structure to be three feet from the side or rear property line. But that close, you'll need to have a higher construction standard for fire codes. So you may choose, you may want to choose, there is an incentive to put it either five or eight feet from a property line. You'll be able to get more windows, you'll be able to do a more typical residential construction standard, but it could be three.
And then, I, I realize this is quite the range, because there's a lot of zoning districts and subzoning districts in the R district, the residential districts. and subzoning districts in the R district, the residential districts. What is the range of side and rear setbacks for primary structures to a property line?
In the single-family districts, it ranges from three feet in the R1E and D up to, I believe, 14 feet in the R1A.
Okay.
Multifamily gets into the, the minimums get into the double digits, like 12 feet, 20 feet, and so forth.
Okay. Thank you. Then, just for the removal of requirement that any new entrance be located at the side or rear of the structure, can you clarify what the regulation is currently and what that means in practice and what the removal of the requirement would mean in practice?
Yes, I can. I was trying to go back to the, there we go. Right now, the code says, "The ADU shall be designed so the appearance of the building, that'd be the, the primary building, remains that of single-family, or a detached accessory building such as a garage or carriage house." So, if you were having the ADU in the principal building, you would have to put the entrance to it on the side or the rear of the principal building. And that if you were, if it was in an accessory building, more opportunities for the placement of the door. And that, this, the removal of that means if, if you were to, perhaps converting your garage in your home is not the best example, but if you were to incorporate an ADU into your home, you could have a, a street-facing door.
Got it. Okay. And I apologize if I missed this, but can you re-clarify what more logical groupings means?
Sure. Well, if you go to the, in the packet there, in general, it starts out with, it's permitted on a single-family, and then the owner occupies the unit, and then talks about the, talks about the design, then it jumps into lot area, then it goes back to
Got it. Okay.
Housing inspection requirements and so forth.
Just to make the interpretation and the reading of the ordinance a little clearer?
Yeah, trying to.
Reorganization.
More chip, more chip away. That, that's where the, like, 11 became three.
Yep. Oh, understood.
With no changes and so forth.
Wonderful. And then, can you remind us of the, taking a step out of the, the changes here? And, and speaking to, to some of the, the public comment, I, I do understand the interest in avoiding short-term rental for these properties, and that's something that we're looking at citywide to begin with. And so, I think that's great that as this body offers up recommendations for new ordinance, that we take that into account to begin with. Just as an editorial note from my personal experience and from the personal experience of many of my friends, summer short-term rentals or subleases are a very, very affordable form of rental housing in this market. It's how I survived many summers as a student, and then my first summer as a young professional, and allowed me to do a lot of saving I needed to do. And so, it would be great, and, and I would have loved to live in an ADU during one of those summers. And so, it'd be great to find a way in which we can both allow for summer subleases, but also avoid, you know, the, the behavior we're trying to avoid, which is more the Airbnb-style short-term rental. And just as a possibility, perhaps a change to the lease or sublease minimum to, to three months or, or something to that extent. I, I don't, that's throwing an idea out there, but I just wanted to plug the importance of subleases in our rental market for the summer months and not lose sight of, of that while we try to solve another problem. So, I'll leave it there. I really appreciate the answers. Would love to hear other colleagues' discussion.
Commissioner Sovey?
I'm just going to piggyback on the lease time, because I, I'm reading it 30-day lease, more than 30 days for a lease, correct? The six months is for owner-occupied, if like you take a vacation or sabbatical as owner-occupied. Those are the two kind of timeline benchmarks that we're looking at, correct?
Correct.
Okay. So, it would allow for like a three-month summer lease or a semester-long lease for these ADUs, correct?
Correct. Yes. It, it could even be a 45-day lease.
Okay.
Well, 31 days, actually.
Yep.
But it would allow for the, the three-month or the, the seasonal.
Okay. I mean, I really appreciate where all of this progress has gone to make these more feasible to happen. I think it's a great kind of tool in the UDC for affordable housing, so I'm just going to kind of say kudos for progress. There's, I think, adding sublease to the terminology for item number six, I'm just going to lay it out now, we'll see what everybody else is saying, but just before I kind of make a proposal for it, but leasing and subleasing of a rental for no less than 30 days seems like a pretty easy change to cover kind of those sorts of maneuvers and loopholes. I think it is interesting if both of them could be rented out under a single rental, like lease agreement, both buildings would be an interesting proposal, because if a single-family house could be converted to a rental, and somebody just wanted to rent the entire parcel long-term, like the, the condition that we have a owner occupied on the, with these ADUs is to kind of manage the renter, right, in this kind of small condition. And so, if we're talking about a typical single-family rental property, there isn't somebody on-site to manage it anyway, right? So, that parcel is off-site managed. So, I may not be so willing to put it on the table now. I'd be interested to hear, you know, everybody else's thoughts on it, but it could be kind of a next progressive step to think about where this, this actually could lead to maintain either owner occupancy or single occupancy of the entire parcel. So, I think it's an interesting idea to propose. In terms of design, I do want to kind of address those comments. Design is very subjective. I think a boat would be cool and a fun architectural effort. I see a lot of existing buildings that if we made a requirement to match would add more ugly things into our neighborhoods. So, I, I think it actually gives young designers ways to actually experiment at a small scale and do something more architecturally significant, do some risk, try new material applications. And so, I think it actually is a catalyst to expand and test and improve design, as much as there is a risk that you're going to have something ugly in your backyard. So, I don't, I don't think that's something we should regulate, and I don't think, we don't regulate design anywhere else. Design Review Board is also voluntary. So, tho- those are my two cents. I, I support this, probably with just a couple changes, you know, that are kind of on the table, but nothing raises a red flag for me that this is going to cause issue. It's only going to kind of cause more opportunity. So.
Commissioner Gibran.
I agree about the design part. I was on Design Review Board, and we don't, you know, if you build a house now, we don't regulate that. If you build a big ugly garage in your backyard, we don't regulate that either. And so, to add this in as a separate thing feels kind of onerous to me. I, not in this round, but in our, in our V3 version, I know that in some of the research that was done the first time around with this, we looked at some other cities that had some really interesting templates. And I think that could be an interesting direction for us to head in. Another thing I would be open to would be not something that would be completely regulatory, but maybe some, some themes for people to hit about roof lines, or breaking up big expanses with windows, or something to kind of give people some general guidelines. I'd be open to that. I don't know if that's in this. I don't think it's in this, but I think it's where we could go. I could be open to that, but I don't think that we could get too prescriptive about that, just based on how the rest of everything works. And the other thing I would like to just put out on the table is that this is a pretty sparsely attended Planning Commission meeting on this, but boy, when we did this before, it was standing room only. There were so many people here. So, this really does have a very robust history of people showing up. And so, I actually feel totally fine about where we are right now. And I think the reason we don't have many people here tonight is because staff did such a good job of reaching out to people, the first and second. I mean, how many times did, there were a lot of times that we talked about this, there were working sessions, and so it may be, it may be kind of perceived right now that it doesn't seem like, "Who's showing up to this thing? This is a really big, important thing." And it was a really big, important thing, and many people showed up. So, it was full of a lot of voices from people from the affordable housing community, and it was, it was very well-attended. So, I, I think it's testimony to the fact that there was such a good job done before that we don't have a lot of people here tonight, frankly. And I think we do need to relax it in order to be able to encourage it. I mean, it would be great if we had the problem of, "These are going up everywhere," but they're not, you know? And I think this will like move the needle a little bit, which is great. We need to probably take baby steps with this. But I think that we do need to keep taking steps. So, I, I support where we are with this. I agree, like, the minor tweak that you talk about, that I'm totally fine with that. So, that's, that's kind of where I am with it. I think in terms of enforcement, you know, it, it's just like with anything else in the city, that it's probably going to be neighbors, you know, reporting to the city. I think that's likely what it's really going to be. And they probably will, for things that, you know, that have an impact on them. So, so that's where I am tonight on this guy.
Commissioner Trudeau.
Thank you. Just to start off, if, if Mr. Leo, do you happen to know how many ADUs have been applied for and/or constructed since we passed the ordinance?
I do not know, but I think that you may be able to count them on one hand.
Okay.
I can't say definitively, but I'm fairly confident it's in, on, you can count them with one hand.
Right. Yeah. And that's, yeah, I was, I hadn't heard an update, but I know it's been a number very close to zero. And so, and I do think these, like, we've seen in other cities that have taken this approach. As Ms. Litah brought up, you pass an ordinance, we see what happens, and this is a common experience where not much gets done. We make a small, we make some small changes, see what happens, and then eventually, we've seen these things really take off in other cities. And so, I think one step at a time is the way to go. I think these are a prudent list of incremental steps that are not, nothing raises big red flags to me. I do appreciate the, the point that we should be thinking about, like, for opening up, we're, we're relaxing rules, how could those rules be exploited? And I just, I don't see anything that looks like it's a huge concern to me. I totally agree on the points already made about design. We don't have design standards for a garage, so why would we, you know, so we don't have a design standard for homes for cars, like, why do we, would we have that for homes for people? And I very much agree with Commissioner Sovey's point that having these smaller-scale projects for people to be creative on and try things out is, is an opportunity to really do that. Similarly, on, on things like notice, accessory structures have, have rules that apply to them, and I don't see why these would require anything more significant than what's already on the books for, "My neighbor's going to build a garage," like, there's rules for that, there's rules for this. I think those, they're, we don't, we don't hear lots of complaints about this being a really high-priority problem around the city for other kinds of accessory structures that get built all the time. On the sublet point, I, I, I'm happy that we're starting to have that conversation as a broader topic in the city. I think that's a really important one to wrestle with to get right, because there's a lot of ways we can do a lot of harm while we're trying to protect it against harms. And I, I would strongly prefer that we have a conversation about sublets in particular in the context of how we deal with sublets citywide, rather than just specifically attached to the conversation around ADUs. And I know that conversation is coming, so it's not punting on it. Like, we're, I think we should take that seriously and be thinking about how ADUs fit into that mix as we have that conversation. But I, I hesitate to try to get too deep into the weeds on that, on this set. I think it's the, I think as it's written, I'm pretty comfortable with. And I'll just say, I would also, in the future, as we continue to take baby steps and iterate, I fully support and love the idea of having a set of templates or guides or exemplars for people to follow. I think that's a great idea. We've seen that in other cities. And it can make it that much easier for people to get these done if you don't have to pay an architect to do a bespoke design. You know, you've got one that's going to be comply, and it'll get through smoothly, lowers the risk, makes it easier for people, and we get what we want. I think that's great. And I'm also, I would also be willing to explore that conversation of full-property leases. I believe before the ADU ordinance, you could theoretically have a granny flat if your granny lived in it, because they're still part of your, your immediate family, so it didn't trigger these unit requirements. So, some kind of concept similar to that, where if you're renting the entire property that has an ADU, but you're using it in such a way that like was legal before the ADU ordinance existed, so your, your granny lives in the second unit, or your, you know, college-aged child, or something like that, that, that would be a great conversation to have down the line. So, I like, I like queuing up more ideas to kind of continue to refine this, improve it, and expand it carefully, keeping it, you know, in balance with community interests. So, yeah.
Commissioner Wetherby?
So, I, I live in our 4C neighborhood, and there's a fair number of duplexes. And what's interesting, and near the stadium, so huge Airbnb area. And what's interesting is almost all of the duplexes are owner-occupied or long-time, like 20-year renter occupied, and then rent the other unit for Airbnb. The single-family homes often are turned over to Airbnb. So, I actually have some hope that this will actually be better and allow more homeowner or full-time owner or full-time tenant. And then you make your money on the Airbnb still with the little parcel in the back, that, that I think right now, we, we have the reverse, where the single homes, it's worth it for people to just Airbnb them. And, and, and so, it's not worth it for them to rent, because you can't actually rent them for as much as you can Airbnb them. So, I actually think that this may sort of, instead of being more Airbnb, actually allow for someone to live in a house and have an Airbnb, or a reverse, or, and there are people who, you know, will go to live in the Airbnb while they rent out their house, or, you know, there's lots of combinations. And I actually think it, it may help the situation, rather than hurt the situation for those areas. I think it's, it's easy to hold back and worry about the worst-case scenarios, but I know 10 years ago, we were not at all worried about Airbnb, because it didn't exist. And the scenarios, you know, there's always going to be a worst-case scenario, and there's always going to be that one person who pushes it. But I'm happy to see that we are iterative on this process already, which is different from a lot of the processes in the, in planning here. So, I think the fact that we already, we already know that we're going to be iterative with this, we already are iterative with this. And if something bad happens, I don't know that we can plan for that entirely, because we, we just, there's so many things out there that we don't know about right now. So, I think taking these small steps and moving forward incrementally is great, and also pulling back on some things. I think we've made some changes if, if it doesn't look to be going in the right direction. So, I, I'm pretty confident that, that this process is, is set up to get the best out of it. And, and I think we're already kind of behind a lot of other places in the country, and we really should move forward with this. And I'm, I'm happy with these, these changes that have been made.
I was going to say, I'll add in that I agree with everyone on, particularly on design and process and enforcement. I mean, this is, the idea of timing is something that comes up a lot. There are many places in our ordinance where, you know, something is allowed for a particular period of time, and it's really, you know, it's up to, it's up to neighbors to kind of be on the lookout for that. I mean, that's just how our code works. I, I am interested in the discussion about what to do about subleasing, because in my mind, that needed to go hand-in-hand with what we wanted to do if we were going to allow renting out the entire allow renting out the entire property, which I do think is really interesting to one, to one entity in particular. Like, I think you have to have limits on subletting if you're going to allow the entire property to be leased out. The idea of renting out the entire property is something that I think is definitely, I would want to consider it for, for round three of this, because I think that that might, I mean, one of the ideas of making sure that this is owner-occupied is, this is one of the big concerns, right? And we, the idea of, like, taking baby steps, I think is important. But something that came up, I remember in the first time around of discussing this, is what happens if the owner of the, you know, of the unit, that, of the property where you do have an ADU goes into the hospital or something? Like, what do you do then with that property if they are no longer occupying or in a position where they can occupy it? And so, I think that that's an interesting, I, I think that we need to consider that. We're particularly going to need to consider that when we have lots of these things. We're not there yet. And that's why I think that this I'd like to punt on for, until the next round, because I do think that this is going to be iterative, and I think that that needs a lot more consideration once we have a lot of these things. But I'm worried that that would gum up the works right now. And so, would rather not deal with that. And on the, the subletting thing then, I think I'm, I'm torn on that, because I do think if this is a broader conversation, that I would almost let that be part of the broader conversation. You know, limits on subletting, or at least the lease, the terms of that. But I also see this as a good protection, because this is one way that I can't imagine gaming the system, right? And so, maybe it makes sense to just deal with that now. Did we, did someone, it sounds like, looks like Commissioner Ackerman wants to, no? Does, do you want to make a motion?
I will.
Okay.
I will make a motion, and I think part of it is because I feel comfortable with making a motion, before I do, because it's at a 30-day. We're not talking about extreme kind of sublease terms here. And so, since this is kind of a special part of the code, I, I think some special terms like this might lead to that discussion somewhere else. So, I'm going to make a motion to modify item six to read leasing or subleasing, leasing, subleasing, or rental of the ADU for less than 30 days is prohibited.
Is that motion seconded? Seconded by Commissioner Ackerman. Discussion of the amendment? Yes.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just, there are three scenarios that could unfold tonight after this, if this amendment is passed. We recommend adoption of the ordinance amendment, we recommend denial, or we postpone. If we recommend, I guess regardless, could we get Mr. McDonald and the City Attorney's Office input on that, just to make sure it covers the bases based on kind of the intent you're hearing tonight?
A question back. Would you be wanting a specific attorney's request, and then maybe reporting back to this body? And I mention this because the normal process is, when planning staff submit items for City Council, the City Attorney's Office does a review also, as routine.
That's helpful. I guess during that review, should we vote tonight to, to move this forward, can it just be noted explicitly to Mr. McDonald and the City Attorney's Office that the intent is to, you know, what has been stated tonight?
Okay.
Just so that that review has that context. Thanks.
Other discussion of the motion to amend the motion? Yes. Commissioner Woods?
Yes, can you repeat it again, and then just tell me what it's intended to do?
Item six, the motion to amend to add, so it will read leasing, subleasing, or rental of the ADU for less than 30 days is prohibited. So, the intent would be-
Hold up one second. I was looking at that list. All right. Can you, okay, so this is what you wanted to read?
Leasing, subleasing, or rental of the ADU for less than 30 days. And the intent is that if a lessee wanted to sub, wanted or needed to sublet, sublet out the space, the ADU, that the terms of that sublease would hold to the same benchmark that the ordinance does, that no less than 30 days, to avoid loopholes of subleasing to somebody else that could then sub, sublease for Airbnb, you know, weekends and those sorts of things.
I, I think I'd have to vote against that, and the reason for that would be, I'm just thinking in terms of sometimes there are students who just need a couple of weeks or something on a sublease as they're waiting to go abroad or something like that. They don't need a full month or, or something. And so, in this case, if they were to find an ADU, and they only needed it for less than 30 days, then they'd be prohibited, correct? Okay.
Correct, yeah. So, my, yeah, the intent would be correct.
Then my other question is, how do we really enforce this? Because a lot of it is going to be driven, I guess, by neighbors or whomever noticing things or something, because many subleases, they're, they're just really contracts or all kinds of things that are happening between people, and people aren't really writing that down. Nobody really knows unless some problem occurs where you got a sublease and the person didn't pay, and then you do it. And, and I'm working with students all the time, and I, and I see it. So, I guess my question is, do we really want to put this into this if there's not going to be any teeth behind it?
So, I, I think the, the intent is more to cover the abuse of this in somebody operating this as an Airbnb more continually, and that, that will get reported. Now, if there's, there's a unique condition that it's a two-week lease, and somebody wants to negotiate, it's a, it's a one-month lease, and they only occupy it for two weeks or something, like, that could be something that they manage. I also think that, right now, where we're at with these increments, the amount of ADUs on the market, that students might be looking for a two-week lease, that if there's only so many, and this is the tipping point of them having an available two-week lease or not, versus the chance of abuse for all of these Airbnbs that we're seeing, I'd rather protect the kind of traffic and, and the intent of the ADU for longer-term lease, more so than the condition of, you know, a couple-week lease at this point, as a more incremental protection of 30 days or more. That's the current condition.
So, it's almost as if there are actually two things going on. On one hand, many of us want to do something about the Airbnbs, and we're using this as an opportunity to do that, not realizing perhaps that there are some unintended consequences that can happen to other people, even though we don't have that many ADUs out there yet. I mean, we're sort of doing this towards the future, thinking maybe one day there'll be 70, 80, 90, 100, I don't know, out there. And so, we want to have something to do about that. So, I would just sort of caution how, that you have to be careful, I think, when we come up with ordinances where we want to solve one problem, and we keep talking about Airbnbs around the table, but I don't think I really see them anywhere on the paper that we're, that we're using. And so, I guess I just kind of have a problem with that. And, and I'm not just directing that to you, I'm just directing it to us as a body, that if that's what we want to be regulating or, or working towards, then that's what we should be doing, as opposed to, you know, doing it sort of like sideways, or like this. So, that, that was just my comment.
Commissioner Trudeau.
Thank you. I entirely agree with Commissioner Woods. I, there, there is a conversation we need to have here around sublets, and I think that's a bigger conversation than around ADUs. And because there aren't very many of them, we're also not creating a huge risk of a proliferation of them. And if we can regulate sublets later, it will still apply to ADUs whether they're built tomorrow or not. So, I don't see the urgency of trying to solve this problem now, especially since I think there's more conversation to be had. And I can think of a lot of ways, this is fine, and a lot of ways it's not fine. And I, I just think, I'm, I'd rather leave it as-is now, have the conversation about sublets and Airbnbs and that sort of thing down the line.
Commissioner Ackerman.
I, I really appreciate that, that feedback, and I think that kind of sways my thinking. And so, just to put timelines on it, the conversations around short-term rentals, the next step is that by July 31st, the city administrator will report back to council with kind of some benchmarking of what other communities do and some recommendations for direction. So, just for context, any conversation on subletting or short-term rentals probably won't even really start until July 31st. I also agree that, you know, I think we're not unleashing the floodgates onto the community, that this doesn't introduce a lot of risk. So, I think ultimately, I, I hear you, and I think this probably causes more questions than it does create solutions. So, I, it's a small tweak, but, but I, I hear you. Also, just as a, as a clerical note, Ms. Leo, I believe we've decided that the entire UDC will include Oxford commas.
Well, for that matter, I will take out the extra space between the commas. It is agreed. And see, the Attorney's Office hasn't reviewed this amendment to the amendment yet.
I knew it was Kevin's fault.
The, something that I would add on to the discussion that, to what Commissioner Ackerman just said, beyond the Oxford comma, which was also bothering greatly, is that in terms of unleashing the floodgates, I would remind people that no matter what happens tonight, this goes on for City Council. And so, however we act tonight, like, there is, there's still at least two months more in the process ahead of us. And so, this change is going to take some time anyway. And so, I was clearly on the fence before about whether we should deal with this here, and I, I think I have been swayed that. I think that there is broader discussion that should be had about what, what consequence limiting subleases has. And so, I, I think I will not be voting for the change. But I appreciate you bringing it up, and I think it's really something to, that we, we ought to consider. I think that this is likely going to be a concern, and I think the fact that there's already been movement at council to think about this citywide and not just in this is really helpful. I think that had that not been, you know, part of the discussion last night, I, that would certainly have changed, you know, what I would want to see in this today.
Commissioner Suve, yes?
I would, I would just, I really appreciate all the discussion, and I think kind of what, what this leads to me is kind of this question of 30 days, and if the concern is kind of something shorter as a sublet, and like what that triggers, just not to modify again or any of those things, but as we reevaluate this, and even kind of full parcel leases and things, what timelines to leases for this section of the code mean, and if it even exists later on, right? So, if, if subleasing isn't part of it, because we want to do something that could be available for less than 30 days, what, what does item number six exist? So, it, it's just an interesting other piece of the conversation now that's rolling, to punt to the next evolution of it. So, I appreciate it.
Did you have something to add, Commissioner Ackerman?
Yeah, I just, I don't know if we want to take an up-down vote on this, and as the second, I would just offer to withdraw that second, if, for the motion to amend. I just, I don't know if an up-down vote really would add anything to the minutes or the record.
Would you like to withdraw if?
Sure.
All right.
So, we don't have to vote on the amendment that we can no longer see anymore. We are back to the ordinance as drafted and the main motion. Any other comments on the, the main motion, the ordinance? Yes?
I just want to clarify, so, I mean, this isn't going to happen, but if somebody decides to hit the ground running, you know, in a month and build one of these, and totally has Airbnb on their brain, if we change the, I mean, just because it takes a long time for us to change these things, we're just starting to do the exploration of short-term rentals, if somebody decides this is why they're building theirs, under this code, but we end up changing it in two years when we finally get around to actually making it a firm thing, are they still able to do their Airbnb model and say, well, I built it because of that, because you allowed it? I'm just curious, like, it, would it change, would, would they be able to change that with, would that, would they be grandfathered in, is my question?
It's a very interesting question. I'm, I'm not sure if I can answer definitively tonight or on the fly. Some of the things that I'm thinking about are, there is no physical difference between these time limits. So, like, the, it's, we, we don't have anything in here right now saying, if you do a short-term rental, for example, then your height limit is 20 feet, but if you are a year rental. So, because there's no physical change, I'm not sure if they would be grandfathered in. They, we might have to honor the, like, a duration of a lease, like, say something started on September 1st, and they have it rented from August 31st until September 3rd. They would have been legal on the day they started. But then for the next, then in October, that, that's what I'm thinking, because there's no physical differences, I don't think they would be entitled to any grandfathering, because once their contract is up and it goes back up on the market, I think they would be subject to the ordinance of the time.
Okay. Because I guess what, as somebody who is around a lot of people that are considering doing this for their own homes, the more bedrooms, the better, is the way they're looking at it, in terms of how many beds they can cram in, and how many futons they can set up in the basement, and all that sort of thing. So, it, I think it could have physical ramifications in the way you design it to a certain extent. But if they still have to fit all of the four unrelated persons, blah, 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 if that all still, then, then you can only cram it full of so many people, right? Because, you know?
Yeah, like you said, because there's, we don't, there's no separate section that says, oh, the occupancy for a short-term rental is X, but the occupancy for a long-term rental is Y. So, all of that sort of leads me to believe, without total analysis, but all of that leads me to believe that they, they wouldn't be grandfathered beyond whatever was actually going on on the day of adoption.
All righty. That's, that was my only, that's my only concern.
That leads me to another question, though, and just want to make sure that, can you go back to the, I'm actually going to do this. The, you could only, you were suggesting that perhaps there would be some method by which people are putting additional beds in, and which, and so effectively renting to two different people, to two potentially unrelated people. But, but this is one ADU, so presumably, it can only be rented to one person, right? I just-
Well, not one person, but whatever the four-
Or to one, to one, there can only be one lease?
Six unrelated people.
Two unrelated people in, in the single ADU, plus their offspring. That's, that's what we're maximizing. Like, that's, that's, what number four says, is that in the ADU, you can only have two unrelated people. The question is, like, is there, does there need to be a limit on, like, I guess this is the sub, well, no, this is the, this is the sublet idea, like, that it can't be, it may be one dwelling unit, but it, there's two different leases, because you're leasing out by bedroom? Like, that just, I don't know how that works. Maybe I don't know that enough, but. Yeah, within the ADU? That's possible?
Carrington. Like, there, there's a, there's a lot of old houses that you see somewhere market that people sublet only their bedroom of a lease.
Got it. Now, it's making me wonder, like, should we go back?
Like, keep in mind that this, like, we currently have, I believe, zero ADUs.
Right, right, exactly. I know. That's right.
I appreciate that, that, yeah. Yes, you're right. And, and again, that it doesn't necessarily have any, what you were just saying about there being physical differences based on that, I, I think that that's right. Maybe somebody does decide to physically design it differently, but they're, that it's not required to physically design it differently.
Right, right, oh, no. Mm-mm, mm-mm, right.
All right. Are there other comments, questions on the main motion? So, this will be effectively summarized on this slide. This is what we're voting on, no changes to what you see, but lots of markups in the, you know, from what is currently on the books. All right, so, all in favor of the motion as read, please say yes. Yes. All opposed? That's no one? That's no one, so the motion passes on to City Council. Okey-dokey. We are at item 11, which is another opportunity for audience participation. You, persons may speak for three minutes about any item that they wish to address us on. Seeing no one, item 12 is commission-proposed business. I am going to have an item of commission-proposed business, and I think, Ms. Leo, if you could please have Mr. Leonard add on to a working session, a discussion about how to incorporate considerations of sustainability within the staff reports that we get. I think it warrants some discussion, both what we want to see, but also to what extent there may be interest in other staff in this building reviewing proposals. Like, I don't know if the Director of the City really wants to review things or not, like, anyway, I think we should, we should talk about that. So if we can put it on, it doesn't have to come to the next working session, but on a future working session, if we could talk about that more.
Right. So noted.
Thank you. Anything else?
Could I add to that, just as part of my hat with the Environmental Commission, that you actually relate it to the sustainability framework, which has metrics and measurements attached to them? I think that that would be the, we're really trying to make that happen more with the Environmental Commission. I think it's good for us as a city to be thinking about those things, too. Some of them are going to not apply at all, but some of them will. And I think it's important for us to actually try to quantify some of these things, too, so that we can actually measure how we're doing, so.
Yeah. And I think us all looking at the framework together, and the things that we want to see measured, and report it out to us regularly, I think is helpful.
That's right. And for us to be reminded of what those measures are, because I think we're, you know, as a commission, we know generally the spirit of it, certainly. But there are a lot of specifics in there, too, that I think would be helpful for us to just hear on a more regular basis, too. So I think it would be a way for those worlds to knit together more seamlessly.
Any other commission-proposed business? I will entertain a motion to adjourn. Motion made by Commissioner Weatherby, seconded by Commissioner Sauvay. All in favor? Yes. We are adjourned. Thank you.